Okay. Charlie, you all right?[433.01][433.01](laughing) Where'd you go? You're my height. Okay.[453.24][453.24](laughing) All right. Calling the October 26th public hearing to order. This is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an easement and the transfer of land from the West Hartford Housing Authority to support the redevelopment project on 540 New Park Avenue. So we will start with staff presentation. Mr. Hart.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, Ms. LeBrow. Yes.
Ms. Blanks.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Present.
Mr. Gold.
Here.
Ms. Carrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Weniglad.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. Now to you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's public hearing. I would now call on Jim Brennan from our Engineering Division to make a brief presentation regarding the subject of the public hearing. And then he can also take any questions council members may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Again, my name is Jim Brennan. I'm a civil engineer, too, with the Engineering Division. Before you tonight are two items, a property easement and a property transfer related to the West Hartford Housing Authority's redevelopment of the 540 New Park Avenue parcel. During the design process, the housing authority approached the town seeking to grant the town an easement for the public sidewalk along the west side of the site, which is along the east side of New Park Avenue. The housing authority's design includes a planted buffer strip about six feet wide, which is located between the curb line and the public sidewalk. This then pushes the public sidewalk onto private property, necessitating the easement to ensure passage of the public across the sidewalk. The second part is during the design process, engineering actually reached out to the housing authority to request a second easement at the northern tip of the property, which is the southeast corner of the intersection of New Park Avenue and Oakwood Avenue. At this location, engineering had observed overtracking of large vehicles turning from New Park Avenue onto Oakwood Avenue. They were tracking across the sidewalk and the grass areas. So we had planned to widen this intersection as part of the upcoming New Park Avenue Complete Streets project, which is being designed right now. So we reached out to the housing authority with a concept plan that would have mitigated the future damage to their sidewalk that they're installing, as well as increased pedestrian safety. The housing authority agreed to relocate the curb line as part of their project, which means we don't have to come back in as part of our project and reconstruct the corner. It also, they declined to give us an easement, instead provided a property donation to the town instead. I will add that the donation area is very small. It's about 160 square feet and is denoted, again, on the northern tip of the map there as a abandoned and a proposed street line. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Are there questions for Mr. Brennan? We will have public comment in just a couple of minutes. We do that for the town council meeting. Thank you very much. Okay. So, yes, Ms. Blanks, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Blanks.
Thank you for the explanation. And my question is simple. As I was reading through the material, and perhaps folks already know what this means, but IP, could you explain that?
IP is an iron pin.
I noticed an engineering term, right?
Yeah, it's a survey term. It's iron pin, so it's just a property corner. So there's an existing pin in the ground.
Okay. And then looking at the map, and I'm trying to follow, you know, in terms of the directions. So it seems like, did you just say, the south something tip? What did you say? Southeast?
The northern tip of the parcel, which is right at the intersection.
Okay. So I'm assuming the side where the construction side is going up, the sidewalk there is going to be lessened, and then on the opposite side is going to be wider? Did I get that right or wrong?
So along, at the northern portion, we're simply moving the curb about five or six feet into the property.
Okay.
And so the development has adjusted the sidewalk in accordingly. So the sidewalk's not going to be any narrower there. They've just brought it further in towards the building.
That's what I was thinking, but I want some clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Any other questions or comments on this easement on the public hearing? All right. We will go to sign up public. No, we won't. We will not pub-- oh.
No, Madam Mayor, no one signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. I was gonna say, we're not going public. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to read into the record a letter dated October 15th, 2021, from TPZ recommending approval. If there's no further comments or questions, this public hearing is adjourned, and we will meet at 7:30 for the town council meeting. Bye.
I am calling the Tuesday, October 26th, West Hartford Town Council meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Ms. Blanks.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Mr. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Wenigrad.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. We go to number three, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we place items 3A, 3B, 3C, 7B, 12A, 12B, 14A, 14B, 14C, and 14D on the consent calendar.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the motion is adopted. And now we go to public forum. Any resident or taxpayer of the town may address the council regarding any item on the agenda which is not otherwise the subject to a public hearing. And we also have written comments that we will acknowledge. But first, we'll go to sign up. Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Okay. First is Adrian Maker. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. No, and it's automatic. It was voice activated, so you don't have to press anything.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adrian Maker. I live at 5 Elmherne Circle. I am a new resident. I'm a 20-year Marine veteran, and I'm here to speak about the petition, the resolution by Mary Fay on crime. I come from the town of Haddam, so obviously our protocol for meetings are a little bit more rowdy than these here. And my first experience with West Hartford was you have to lock all your doors because you live in West Hartford. My next-door neighbor is a senior citizen, and within the first week, her house was broken into. Last year, my car was slashed at the parking lot of Stop &amp; Shop. It was slashed in my driveway. I had someone attempting to break into my house, and as a senior citizen, I'm over 70 years old, I am rather concerned about the safety of my neighbors, because if something happens to my automobile, I have five senior citizens that depend on me to drive them around as a volunteer. So when I see youth going around, it's not like the old days. If my neighbor saw me doing something wrong, they would slap you down. If you said something to your parents, they would really do it again. So I'm looking for responsibility from whomever's in charge. When juveniles are causing havoc, that something takes a responsibility. Certainly, the parents, if they're minors, should be responsible, and if not, the law enforcement needs to have the tools to execute their duty. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maker. The next is Sean Daly, and I'll just let you know who's on deck after that, Dennis Swanton.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the West Hartford Town Council, residents and guests of the town of West Hartford, my name is Sean Daly. I reside at 1779 Asylum Avenue in West Hartford. I come to you today to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7C, which I'll refer to as Mary Fay's anti-crime resolution. Crime has dramatically risen in West Hartford, and it is not due to COVID. The trend began long before the pandemic started. According to Microtrends.com, the data clearly shows a consistent rise in the crimes of robbery, property crime, larceny, and motor vehicle theft since 2013, where in many cases, not only are the statistics for these crimes above the average for the state of Connecticut, but they are also significantly above the national average as well. Now, some will try and be a spin doctor and use misnomers, such as this is fear-mongering. And we certainly all know what that term tries to mean. It's a bullying tactic used by politicians when they're looking to hide the truth. The bottom line is these are the facts, and they are irrefutable. Want more facts? If you look on NeighborhoodScout.com, you'll find that according to the FBI crime data, the crime rate in West Hartford is, quote, "considerably higher than the national average across all communities in America, from the largest to the smallest." In fact, the chance of becoming a victim of either violent crime or property crime in West Hartford is 1 in 44. Let me repeat that: 1 in 44. And what's more, relative to Connecticut, West Hartford has a crime rate that is higher than 89% of the state's cities and towns of all sizes. This is not fear-mongering. These are the facts, and they are irrefutable. I've heard during the recent debates, several town councilors mentioned that words matter. Words may matter, but actions speak louder than words. I've heard mention in the debates how well the parties work together to listen to town residents. Well, this is your chance to show that actions speak louder than words. I urge this town council to reach across the aisle and unanimously vote for the anti-crime resolution that Town Councilor Mary Fay has brought before this distinguished group of legislators. Do not throw this into some obscure subcommittee. It doesn't belong there. Now is the time to show you care about the safety and security of the residents of the town of West Hartford. Now is the time for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Next, Dennis Swanton, and after that, Chris Torino.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and residents of West Hartford. I'm here also to speak in favor of the anti-crime resolution that is brought up by Town Councilor Mary Fay. You know, I've seen crime in my neighborhood just rise. On Fern Street, usually, I told my son today, yeah, I'm coming down to West Hartford Town Council to speak about a crime bill, and I told him about a shooting on Fern Street, like, a shooting. And he's like, where? I'm like, right around the corner. He's like, you gotta be kidding me. Like, that's what's happening in town now. My neighbor had his rims stolen from his car. And I think what it is, is that the, just around the country, it's this lax of supporting police and really going after criminals. In Hartford, our neighbor city here, 28 shootings this year, 28. People, you know, black and brown. I mean, that's ridiculous. We should come out and say something. This is West Hartford. This is not like, you know, a small town. We're one of the leaders. And if there is a killing, if there's a shooting in this country, one of you would be running here, crawling over each other to put a resolution up against guns. But 28 black or brown people are being shot in Hartford, but there's nothing. Why? I don't understand. I think that we should come up with an anti-crime resolution and show Hartford that West Hartford means business. I want to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Next is Chris Torino, and after that, John Demitris.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about...
Oh, just, Mr. Swanton, we didn't get your address for the record. You didn't state your address for the record. Could you just come up and do that? I'm sorry, don't go anywhere.
I'm sorry about that. It's Dennis Swanton, 74 Keeney Avenue.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chris.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Torino. I live at 17 Wilcher Lane. I'm here to support Councilwoman Fay's anti-crime resolution, 7C. I want to thank Mayor Cantor and the council for listening to this resolution, so thank you for bringing it up and letting us speak to you about it. I'll be brief. I guess everyone has mentioned the crime that's going on, so you got that point, but I've seen it myself, and we had, I live over by St. Joe's and by the post office where someone was carjacked on federal property, which of course was not a good thing. So we don't want to see that in our town, and I'm sure this is a very bipartisan issue because we're all concerned about crime. I don't think it's a Democrat, a Republican, or any other issue, just a people issue. I also would like to call to task our state representation. They need to be involved, because this juvenile issue is coming from Hartford, not from this town council. And the only way it's going to change is in Hartford, and they should be out here talking to you about what they're going to do about it, because I haven't heard that they've done anything. Maybe they have, or proposed something. I heard they lightened it up a little, but our police, which I support 100%, need to have the tools they need to prosecute these people. And just a silly story, I was downtown going to the doctor on Farmington Avenue, two quads racing down, skeleton masks with big smiles under the skeleton mask and waving or whatever they were doing, and I, you know, you don't call 911 for that. So I called the regular police number, and then you got to go to this and that. By the time I got to somebody, they probably were in, you know, stores or something. But anyway, maybe a better way, a quicker way for people to report stuff to the police, other than clogging a 911 line, I think, which we don't want to do, but maybe just someone we could call and say, hey, you know, could you get a cruiser or something in this area because something's going on? And then, you know, just finally, I support the crime resolution, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Torino. Next is John Demitris, and after that, Boris Cantor.
My name's John Demitris. I live at 608 South Main Street. I'm here in support of the Mary Cantor crime bill resolution. Some of the things that we've seen over the last few months is an increase in the number of people driving through West Hartford on ATVs. I live on South Main Street, so we'll see a parade of 100, 200 of these vehicles. They're on both sides of the road, doing wheelies. It's terrorizing. We have to do something about this. And the number of people that are driving up and down South Main Street with, it sounds like illegal mufflers. These things are popping, they're really loud. It's destroying the quality of life. So between the ATVs, the off-road vehicles, and these illegal mufflers, it's causing normal residents to wonder what is the value of staying in West Hartford. So please keep that in mind as we talk about this resolution today. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Demitris. Next is Boris Cantor, and then John Sousa.
I came to the United States in West Hartford...
Just your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Cantor. Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name, my name is Boris. Actually, my legal name Baruch, and last name Cantor.
And your address?
But everybody called me Boris. It's easier to call Boris, okay?
Thank you, and your address?
And my address, 81 Iroquois Road, 06117.
Thank you, continue.
So I came to the United States in West Hartford in May 1978. So very likely, I lived here longer than many of you in West Hartford. We chose West Hartford because of environment, good school. We came, my wife, me, and our daughter, 12-years-old. And you can imagine, I was almost as young as most of you. That was a lot of time ago. So I love West Hartford, this beautiful town. I really enjoy living here. My daughter moved to California. Everybody in the family moved somewhere, but I continue to live in West Hartford. So what happened recently, this year, twice, my property was damaged. I even did not call the police. I did not see it was damaged. And one of the damages, it was broken American flag. And, but my neighbor saw that, and they called the police, and police should give them a record, they found who was a person. And that was surprisingly suited of whole high school, young men. So when police found them, they talked to her mother and said, you have two choices, and that would be my choice. One of the choices, he will get crime record, and second choice, whatever I decide, then compensate me for my property. So when his mother called me, I said, I don't want him, young man, to have a crime record. On the other hand, I don't need you to compensate my property, but what I do want, I want you to send some charity money. Whatever you estimate it would cost me to repair this, I want to send charity. So I don't know whether to send a tornado, but at least I did not want to have young men with a record of a crime. But the reason that happened is really tell me that that's petition by Mary Fay probably is long view, because we have a lot of neighbors who also have damage, car or damage. I didn't have it, but this year I have these two damages, and I was very upset with American flag, and I was very upset with the damage to my house. But anyway, I kind of urge all of you to consider what we can do as a town to make it safer for younger people. If that kid, actually, he came with a couple of friends. So that's all my presentation, and I really urge you to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. The next, and that sounds weird, and the next person is John Sousa, and then after that, Sandra Berenstein.
Good evening, Mayor. John Sousa, 8 Ironwood Lane in West Hartford. I'm a longtime resident, and I also manage property in town and in a bunch of the surrounding towns. towns. This, I'm here to support Mary Fay's petition for the crime bill. I will say that it's becoming more and more common. I deal with this every day. Tenants have their cars broken into. People come through the lots late at night. We see it on video. Most people are, you can't see their faces, they're covered up. They steal tires, they steal the catalytic converters. That's the newest thing in the last year or so. Now, these crimes, you know, to you and I, maybe we all have, you know, in this room, I'm sure everybody has comprehensive insurance, but a lot of my tenants, you know, live hand to mouth, and when someone steals their tires or they break their window, you know, that to them, they have to make a decision, what, how do I pay for this? They can't do it. A lot of them struggle to pay the rent as is. And these are the kind of things that, you know, from a perspective of a small person, a little guy, just trying to make their life in the world, these are the type of problems that really affect their lives. And I see this as, you know, these young people, they're emboldened. I don't know whether it's too much, what's the name of that video game, Grand Theft Auto or something, where they get emboldened to do more crime when they can get away with stealing stuff out of cars, and the next month they're trying to steal a car out of somebody's driveway, and they're going to be confronted by a resident of town, and someone's going to get shot, someone's going to get hurt, and unfortunately be too late then. And usually it doesn't start with that. It starts with stealing something out of a car because their friend dared them, or they're just looking for some money for whatever. But I watch it on video. I help my tenants, you know, 90% of the time, the police can't do anything. They don't, they don't have any real evidence other than, you know, shadow of figures at night doing these things. The tires are expensive, the catalytic converters are a problem, and these problems don't go away. It's, we have to nip these problems in the bud when they're small, before these kids, you're doing them a favor by getting them early and getting them, you know, showing them there's consequences to their actions before they graduate to higher crimes. You know, we're not doing our children favors today by letting them get away with all this stuff. We need some discipline in the world, and if the parents can't provide it, we have to provide it as a society. I'm sorry to say it, but it's the truth. And it used to be common knowledge that everybody would do that. We used to live as a community where we'd watch, you know, other people's kids and say, hey, don't do that. And today, if you do that, people want to, you know, bark down your throat. But unfortunately, we've lost a lot of that, and we need to start doing that as a society. And it starts with the little things. The thefts off my front porch, you know, where they steal your packages, what do they call them, porch pirates. It's these kind of things that, you know, reduce the quality of life for everybody, not just, you know, deep in West Hartford, up on the hill where, you know, you don't get too much traffic. It's the people that are in the main drags that live in the apartment house that are just trying to get by in the world, and it helps, it hurts them the most. So thank you. I hope I've made my point. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sandra Berenstein. I live at 9 Baiton Road, and I've lived here for about 34 years. And it's only until recently, I don't think anyone ever associated the words "at gunpoint", "carjacking" with Bishop's Corner and our beautiful West Hartford. And I am here tonight to say, something has to be done. And I appreciate the work that Mary Fay has put into her resolution, and I support it, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berenstein. And I know that, is there anybody else in the audience that has not had a, signed up to speak that would like to speak to this? Okay, and now I'll turn to Ms. LeBrow, and she has received a number of emails, and she can read those. Thank you.
The following residents have submitted written testimony in support of item 7C. Angelo Di Matteo, 136 Pioneer. Marsha McCracken, 50 Fairley Road. Lauren Crum, 97 Vera Street. Beth Kyle, 52 Arundel. Brad Collins, 27 Real Bank Terrace. PJ Lewis, 37 Briarwood Road. Elizabeth Santoro and Bob Santoro, 132 Garfield. And Susan Repley, no address given. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. Now I lost me. Okay. All right. Is there any other comment and no other written in? We have that on the record. So now we will go to number five, Mr. Davidoff. Consideration of consent? Do I have the wrong? Okay, so I think I have a few copies now. I'll go off of this. Okay, sorry. 6A, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of an easement and the transfer of land from the West Hartford Housing Authority to support the redevelopment project on 540 New Park Avenue.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Hart, do you want to do a very brief just description of this, and then we will go to a roll call vote in comments and roll call.
Happy to do that, Mayor. So the town council conducted a public hearing regarding this matter earlier this evening. We had a presentation from Mr. Brennan from our engineering division. And just to briefly recap in terms of background, our West Hartford Housing Authority, as the council is well aware, plans to construct, and actually, construction is underway right now, a transit-oriented, mixed-use and mixed-income development at 540 New Park Avenue. The project was approved some time ago. The plans require a shift in the location of the public sidewalk away from the curb line and onto private property. That would, you know, facilitate, enhance the pedestrian experience, would allow for a planted buffer between traffic and the pedestrians. That's in keeping with the work we want to do along New Park Avenue there. And the easement, the easement would facilitate the ability of the public to utilize the sidewalk and the town's ability to maintain the sidewalk. So the town, when this item was initially introduced, the council referred it to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, which has come back with a favorable response, and staff is now recommending council approval of the attached resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. If there's any, well, we already had the public hearing on it, so any comments from the, all right, and we will go to roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Ms. Blanks?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigret?
Yeah.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. Thank you, Mr. Brennan, for being here and presenting. Appreciate their work on this. That's going to be an exciting project. Okay, now we go to number seven, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we set for public hearing at 7:15 PM on November 16, 2021, an ordinance prohibiting the operation of all-terrain vehicles on public property.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any objections? Okay, seeing no objection, hearing no objection, the motion is adopted. And then we go to C, yeah, 7C, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we refer this item to the Standing Committee on Public Safety.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments and questions? I'm guessing Ms. Fay.
Yes, yes, thank you. May I?
Sure.
Certainly. Thank you very much. I felt this was extremely important to bring forward. I would render, or actually, I know, because I count how many emails I get on certain subjects, this is the one that was overwhelming my email, my email box as well as my voicemail box. People are extremely concerned about the crime activity here, particularly the violent crimes. And by our own reporting, I'm not going to give a bunch of stats, I think Mr. Daley did a nice job of that, but by our own reporting by our chief, you know, violent crime indexes through July were up 63% over the prior year. So our own data is telling us we have an issue, clearly, and we know that the juveniles have figured out how to beat the system, so to speak. They're repeat offenders, they're doing it numerous times. I'm very concerned about somebody getting hurt. We do already have gunshots fired here in town, and, you know, people are being carjacked at gunpoint, and people are being carjacked with their children in the car. I think it's just a matter of time. That's already scary to me. That has made me change my habits. There are certain things I can't do anymore, like sit in my car and check my email while running for, you know, through appointments. We can't ignore this anymore. The people have spoken, this group has spoken, these are our constituents. I think we all need to listen to them and represent them. But even more compelling, I want to talk about a couple of things that I think are extremely important. You know I all come, I come from a law enforcement family, I'm not going to go through that, but I back the blue, and I always have, and I always will. And it pains me to see these fine young men and women in uniform out there day after day, trying to keep us safe, and their toolbox is empty. That's a shame. That is a shame. We are seeing an increase in retirements. These men and women are extremely difficult to replace. In fact, I would call you irreplaceable. And it's going to perpetuate unless we step in. People are tired of talking. I am not going to support this going to committee. We've talked ad nauseam about this. There are articles in the paper about this. There are national issues about this. We want to be a leader. We've always been a leader. This is not a partisan issue. This is not. Anybody who doesn't take crime seriously, to me, doesn't belong in a government role. And that includes our legislators. I think people are fed up. We had the opportunity, or they did, to come forward during a special session and address this, and guess what? They didn't. And why? Because our governor doesn't think we have an issue. Our governor doesn't believe that, so all people who are in that party are not going to support this. I am supporting this. I am signing this tonight, and I'll see who around this table will sign this with me. I hope it's more than just me, but I have stood alone before, and I will continue to stand alone. Now, let me just tell you, people with courage are asking for help. The police chief of Waterbury, Fernando Spagnola, Chief Spagnola, he has come out several times in October. He's been on the news, and these are his words. We need some help. We need some help from the legislators. We need people to recognize and understand that there's kids involved in auto theft graduating to violent crime. They're getting caught with guns, they're stealing guns out of residences, and they're shooting at each other, and they're shooting randomly in our communities. They're jeopardizing their own lives, and they're jeopardizing the safety of our communities. Is this the kind of town we want to live in? Is this what we want? I do not think so. It's not working. We need to push people to address this. And all this petition, resolution, whatever you want to call it, that's already been approved in Newington, Weathersfield, and Rocky Hill, all it does is codify what you guys are already saying you're doing with, working with our legislators. This is just putting accountability in place that says we need people to go back to this legislator, legislature, legislator building and get through their jobs. Take this up. The people are speaking. Listen. So I am supporting this full, fully, and I really don't want to see it get tied up in committee and never see the light of day again. So I will leave it there.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Fay. So I will go to Ms. Blanks, the Chair of Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Fay. And what I would state is that this, we refer to public safety as other issues have been, as well as we work with the town manager and our chief of police. And we have been doing good work in committee. Many of us sitting at this table have been present at those committees, and we do know that Chief Riddick and his entire team is working on these issues. And yes, I understand the passion, I understand the concern. We're all concerned, okay? And we are all working, especially our public safety. And our chief of police, his team, and the entire department are working on these issues. And yes, we do have statistics, and those statistics will show from year to year where we fall. And I understand and I completely identify with the recent issues that have occurred in town. And yes, we all should be concerned. And from what I also understand from our town manager and our chief of police, that, and I, trust me, I'm not minimizing anything, but at the same time, I understand that some of our vandalism, and I get it, we leave our cars unlocked, we leave valuables in our car, and that attracts folks, especially our young people, who may be roaming around, who for some reason, parents and guardians are not paying attention to their behavior, and so therefore, they end up in our town taking things that belong to other people. And I, I get it, I get it, but we do have a process, and we need to follow that process. And that process is that we need to refer this to public safety, and therefore, that would be my argument, Madam Mayor, that this goes to public safety, we follow the process just like we do with all the other items.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Any other? Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this, this issue, let me take a step back. So I'm not going to be on the council when this is in committee, and it appears as though this is going to committee. This body has taken positions on a lot of issues outside of its jurisdiction, encouraging the state to act on some issue that the body has determined impacts it, you know, whether it's voting, we did want a voting, we did want on banning assault rifles and so forth and so on. So we have precedent to act on something like this. So I think the issue itself, I think, is pretty straightforward. The legislature does need to do something. I think there's bipartisan agreement on that, because they've fallen down on the job. I mean, the issue really is the escalation of the severity of the crime. That's, and Chief Riddick has constantly brought that up at the public safety meetings. You know, he talks about how car theft leads to carjacking, leads to what we've seen in terms of the ATVs, and then, you know, carjackings with people, with occupants, a toddler in one instance. So that's a long-winded way of saying, I think this issue is well within our jurisdiction. It's one that I think, and I hope, that in committee, because that's where it's going to go, it looks like, it be addressed, because it's an important one. And I will say that Chief Riddick himself, who is a really great chief of police, and he's dealing with rules and regulations state, set by the state government, has said that the state laws are lacking, that his hands are tied in many respects, and we don't have the tools to fix those. So what we do have, and I think what the public is bringing up, is we have a voice, and we've used that voice to encourage the state to act in other instances, and I hope that the next council does so in this one.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? So I just will say that the most important things that we deal with go to committee, not the things that we feel that we are, we have something to say, but we don't really take direct action, telling people what are, what we really think will change behavior. It's more of a statement of, you know, a statement of position. That's not what we want to do about public safety, a statement of position. We all agree. We all agree that, that crime is serious, escalating crime is something that needs to be addressed, and that our community, the priority, the number one priority of our community is public safety. So that's, that's where we stand, and the best way to do that is to get the information from the police, and even, you know, they're participating in a regional task force that is gathering information as we speak. It just started about a month and a half ago, maybe, Mr. Hart? And then, and we are, this is the type priority, and what are those? And we have periodically done those updates to, whether it's our own legislators or whether it's the chief collaborating with other chiefs to come up with, with information and action, recommended action, because we don't want to keep knocking on that door. When we do it, we want it to have impact, and we want it, people to listen and really make sense. And I'm not saying that to say, oh, you know, oh, we'll just, you know, no, I'm really serious. This is, we're all concerned about the safety of every single individual in our, in our community. So I will say, I think a question, West Hartford PD, somebody asked about, I think it was, who was it that asked? I'm not sure, who asked about the 911 call? There is a West Hartford PD tips line that we did establish. We also established a better tracking system for crime, so we can't actually understand what we were doing. We weren't actually in that position before. So number one, to understand actually what is happening and where those trends are. And number two, having this tip line. Number three, having a video sharing program so we can... Number three, having a video sharing program so we can engage, which we have been doing. We had several business meetings with our business community that were very, a number of our, my colleagues were present at. We had really constructive conversations about businesses that have been impacted by this, as well as individuals. And so those are important conversations that we were present at and that we listened to, to again, gain that partnership in gathering data and information, and hopefully hints and tips on catching people. But also, what other? And then, obviously, the regional crime. We can't solve this by ourselves, we know. And band it together as we, as we saw, as, you know, in almost anything. Together, we stand stronger when we bring this to the legislature. So those are all reasons why we are going to bring it to committee. And with that, I think we will, all those in favor? Oh, Ms. Faye.
I'm sorry. I don't want to violate the rules. Am I allowed to make a comment now, or no?
You can make a comment. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. I really appreciate this. And again, I'm not trying to be difficult or, I'm disappointed because I really thought this was a nonpartisan issue that we could really come together on. And I really, I do value the subcommittees and the work that we all do. I truly do, and the staff does. But I, the people are using the word crisis. This is not something that should take six months to go through committee. People use the word crisis, and I think we reacted appropriately when COVID was a crisis. I don't remember all that stuff that got implemented going through committee. I believe that this is the same type of thing. That's all I want to say. I don't want this to be, you know, it shouldn't be an us and them, but I, I feel strongly about this. I feel passionately about this. And the people expect us to do something, not talk anymore. They're exhausted. They think we're full of hot air. And I tend to agree. Why this wasn't taken up in a special session? And one more point I'd like to make, please, in the spirit of inclusiveness, I've never been to any of these meetings that you've had with legislators. I don't think you've reached across to the aisle to make non-Democrats part of this process, and I would like to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faye. I'm not sure, the legislator meetings actually, we're happy to notice and have those meetings, and we will. But the business associations, which legislatures might be present at, those were open to everybody, and everybody did get notices. But I don't know why you couldn't attend, but, but that was, that was fine. But also, I will say that the ATV was an example of how going to public safety, talking about a, an issue that is affecting the quality of life in our community, whether it's a crisis or not, for some people that are experiencing it, it is a crisis. So I think that that's a pretty streamlined way that we can approach this as well. So I don't think it will sit for months. But again, we're not going to sit and wait until things are resolved completely. We are, as, as we decide that things are going to be helpful to do, we, we will do them. But anyway, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? No. Okay. Ms. LeBrow, you have? Yep. Yes. Thank you very much. And then we will go on to item eight, I think. Do we have, is it eight? Reports from the town manager. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor. I've loaded my report in board docs for the council. And let me just touch on the items here. The report's relatively short this evening. As the council is well aware, last week, we rescinded our universal indoor mask mandate, you know, as of Friday, the 22nd. However, there are, there are a few areas, related areas I wanted to touch on in terms of where masks are still required, because we have received some questions and want to make sure there isn't any confusion. So yes, we've lifted the mask mandate. However, you know, mask wearing, we want to continue to promote this. It is beneficial. We encourage it for anyone who's not feeling well, who's experiencing a cold, maybe other upper respiratory type symptoms. And we're going to monitor our transmission rates here locally and at the regional level. And we reserve the right to make changes in the future if, if we need to. So masks, masks are still required in the following situations. So all unvaccinated people, they must continue to wear masks in indoor public spaces, and that's in compliance with the state's mask policy. All residents, regardless of their vaccination status, need to wear a mask in certain settings, such as our schools, such as public and private transit, childcare facilities, healthcare facilities, facilities housing vulnerable populations, and correctional facilities. This is all spelled out in the state's policy. And then we are asking everyone visiting our public libraries to wear a mask because they serve children who aren't eligible for the vaccine yet. In addition, individual businesses and organizations can choose to require their employees and customers to wear a mask in their establishments. And we would ask everyone to, to respect and honor the rules that those individual businesses and organizations set. Moving on, moving on, we're experiencing a storm today and tomorrow. We're expecting it will last until tomorrow morning. We may experience some wind gusts later this evening, one to two inches of rain. Right now, knock on wood, we're not expecting any significant flooding. If conditions change, we can open up our emergency operations center as needed. I want to touch on something from our fire and police departments, our public safety departments. This is fire, police. Actually, we've invited the health district and our office of emergency management. I think this is really neat, and the first time they're doing this. They are going to collectively sponsor a public safety fair. And that's going to run from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 13th, at the Elmwood Community Center. And this is going to be a free event. It's going to include a flu clinic. People don't need to make an appointment. They can just come. If they have insurance, we're asking them to bring a copy of their card. We're going to have CPR demonstrations. We're going to have a fire extinguisher exchange. We're going to have, people will be able to obtain disposal bags for old prescriptions, and a whole variety of related topics. Our CERT team, which is Community Emergency Response Team, they will be present. You know, they can do a little recruiting. So I really want to thank all of the departments that have been involved in setting that up and really looking forward to that event. Moving on, couple of items from Public Works. Our leaf bag collection program, which we run every time, every year around this time. It will start on November 1st. It's going to run through December 17th, and that's where we collect bagged leaves at the curb. And residents can either use the biodegradable paper bags or a town-issued yard waste cart for that purpose. It's worked very well for many years. You know, residents should just put their bags out on the curb, and we will pick them up. Public Works is also going to hold a paper shredding date, shredding event on Saturday, November 6th. It's going to run from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and we're going to do this at our Brixton Street location, at 17 Brixton Street. And we retain a private vendor for this person, for this purpose, and they can safely shred all of your confidential papers for free. And all of that material is recycled, is recycled. Public Works is also conducting its annual fall compost bin and rain barrel sale. Backyard composting is an excellent way for gardeners, helps us reduce trash going into the landfills, et cetera. And people can learn where to buy this equipment on the town's website. Just three more things quickly, and I believe I mentioned this last time around. We are changing our agenda management system. We're moving from board docs to a new product called Civic Clerk. We're doing that next month. We do think this new system is going to have many improvements over the current system, which was a great step forward for us. But the new Civic Clerk system will allow us to streamline things even better. So really want to thank Girada Reinheimer and our town clerk, Essie LeBrow, for heading up that project. And then November 2nd is Election Day, very important day for our community. All nine of our polling places will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Election Day registration will be held at our West Hartford Senior Center at 15 Starkell Road. Absentee ballots are still available. If you have not sent in an application and need a ballot, we would encourage you to stop by Town Hall or any of our three town libraries to obtain one. Applications may be left in our election drop boxes in front of Town Hall, or at the Faxton Library, or at the Town Clerk's office. And please remember to turn in your completed ballots by 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 2nd, in order to be counted. And those ballots may also be placed in the election drop boxes. Lastly, I want to draw your attention to a neat handout that our health district has prepared, and that I've attached here as well. And this provides a great summary of all of the COVID-19 vaccines that are available, who's eligible to receive one, what's been approved in terms of boosters, who can get a booster shot, et cetera. So want to thank our health district for putting that material together, and we've been sending that out via our social media. That completes my report, Mayor. Happy to take any questions that council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Questions for town manager? Ms. Carrigan.
Thank you. Are we still doing through you, Madam Mayor? Okay. It's been a while. Sorry. Thank you, Mad Hart. Sorry about that. You mentioned it's a fire extinguisher exchange, but here it says you can bring in your old one. So are you saying if I bring in my old one, I will get a new fire extinguisher?
Thank you. I stand corrected. No, that is just to dispose of your old extinguisher. Thank you for pointing that out, council. I stand corrected.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hart? Nope. Okay. Announcements, 100 Most Influential Blacks in Connecticut are honored through the Connecticut Conference of NAACP branches. This was in the state on effective October 23rd. They were named, and our very own state representative, Tammy Exum, and our police chief, Renan Riddick, were on the list. This is the 100 Most Influential Blacks in Connecticut award ceremony, celebrating the influencers, community leaders, leaders, and industry trailblazers who often go unrecognized for their exceptional work in the community. Leading as a black person in Connecticut is always challenging, but our current climate highlights the need for them to be recognized, affirmed, and honored. Congratulations to them. We Care Card, donate $50 and enjoy 20% off at all participating businesses from November 4th to 14th. Get a jump on your holiday shopping. Proceeds benefit Hark, which is celebrating 70 years of supporting individuals with intellectual and related disabilities. To purchase your card, text WE CARE CARD to 41444 from your smartphone. That's 41444. And get your card today and support this worthy cause. West Hartford Hauntings, it's that time of year. Noah Webster House and Historical Society Spooky Theater Cemetery Tour, with a cast of over 20 actors. It's a perfect blend of history and outdoor theater. Each year, storylines are created based on research conducted on the lives and deaths of past residents. The lantern lit tours take place at Old North Cemetery at 80 North Main Street on Friday, October 29th, Saturday, October 30th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Tours leave every 15 minutes and run for 45 minutes. Due to some scary content, it is suggested that participants be age 10 or over. Tickets are $15, and you can go to Noah Webster at their event page to find out more. Male Oween Event, bring children dressed in costume to West Farms Mall Second Annual Event on Saturday, October 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is a free event and held outdoors in the parking lot, A, near J.C. Penney. Walk the boulevard, oh, very interesting, to collect candy from West Farm retailers. Participants will receive a Moll Oween bag and also be eligible for surprise giveaways. West Farms is pleased to partner with NBC Connecticut and the local fire and police departments. Sounds like a great event. Real Ale Harvest Fest returns on Saturday, November 6, 2021, with two sessions, 2:00 to 5:00 and 6:00 to 9:00. It's a unique and exclusive event that takes place on the grounds of the Noah Webster House, and its unlimited samples served in a souvenir tasting glass. Advanced tickets are available for $50, and after November 3rd, and at the door, tickets are $60. Designated drivers are welcome at $20 per person. Guests must be 21 with proper ID. All proceeds benefit the not-for-profit museum. West Hartford House Tour is a fundraiser that will provide curated tour of some of the town's most iconic Houses of Worship. At each site, guests will learn about the architectural features of the building, the story of the congregation, and how it interacted with the community over time. On Sunday, November 14th, six sites will be open to the public from 12:30 to 4:30 p.m. as part of this tour. Guests will tour the sites and receive a commemorative program with histories and vintage images related to the Houses of Worship. And then our own West Hartford Symphony Orchestra presents Intimately Distant on Sunday, November 7th, at Kingswood Oxford Roberts Theater. WHSO is very proud of its two featured soloists from Connerd High School, who will be graduating in June 2022 and leaving the orchestra to pursue their dreams. They are cellist Maggie Slapp and violinist Thomas Turrantin, Terratin, I think. Maggie Slapp has been a member of the orchestra since she was a student at Sedgwick. She performed the charming and challenging Rakoko Variations by Tchaikovsky. Thomas Terratin joined the orchestra during his freshman year and will be playing the lovely Romance for Viola and Orchestra by Max Bruch. Two fanfares will round out the program. Aaron Copeland's Fanfare for the Common Man, and then the Fanfare for the Uncommon Person is an original by our own Chirappa. Ticketing is limited and available on first serve basis. Go to WHSO.org or 860-521-4362. And finally, Ms. Bennett, Christmas at Pemberley Playhouse on Park is December 1st to December 19th. The Chicago Tribune calls it an "unstuffy, highly entertaining, and warm-spirited work, the kind of thing multiple generations can enjoy together." Tickets are now on sale from $40 to $50. Student and senior discounts are available. Previews are December 1st and 2nd. And go to their webpage to learn more. Does anybody else have other announcements? No? Okay. Corporation Counsel, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no formal report, and we do not require an executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? All right. We have no appointments. Oh, no, I'm sure that's not true. They're all consent. I think we are now, 13. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. No petition, no executive session. Mr. Davidoff?
Madam Mayor, I move adjournment.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good night.